Pledge of allegiance, we'll have the Lord's Prayer. So let us all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord's Prayer, all together.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. By the kingdom come, by will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We shall not give up until we reach them, but deliver us from evil. And thy will be kingdom, and power, and glory to him. Amen.
Thank you. Sajid is our recorder tonight, so Sajid, will you give us a roll call?
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Moyer.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
And Commissioner Sess.
Here.
Okay. The minutes were in your packet, I hope you had a chance to look those over, is there a motion to accept?
So moved, second.
Motion made, second, in discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Sajid, distributions.
Okay, on page one of your distributions in general fund, the gas billing sixteen thousand fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, that includes the school portion which we reimbursed for. On down that page, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents, that's our Cigna health insurance, that's the employee and the employee portion. On the bottom of that page, twenty-eight hundred and seventy dollars to Dogways Depot, that is part of the dog park grant. You can guess what that is. And on the next page, we have fifty-five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents to Highland Products Group, that's more of the dog park purchases through the grant. Four thousand fifty-six dollars and fifty cents to Nightlight Displays, that is some of our lights that we purchased, maybe some Halloween lights and Christmas lights. Public Entity Partners, thirty-five thousand and thirty-seven dollars, that's our annual property insurance program. Fifteen thousand dollars at the bottom of the page to S V C A, that's our annual appropriation to them. The next page, two thousand dollars to the Guanis Club, that's for the Christmas parade. And down at the bottom of that page, seventy-two thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents to Trustmark National Bank, that's debt paid on the fire permits. On the next page, there is five thousand dollars to Bassberry and Sims P L C, that is for the T M G redevelopment plan, that's the total fee to the attorneys that worked on that. And on the last page of the general fund, twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cents to C R S, that's the employee and the employer portion of retirement. And State Street Eight, there's a check for six thousand dollars to Wood Equipment, that is for a new bush hall for the skid steer. Fifty-one hundred and thirty-six dollars to Cannon and Cannon, that's a payment to them for the multi-mobile engineering. Nothing significant in drug fund or tourism. Home Grant, Monroe County Mobile Homes, one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars, that is the home for the home rental. And one last point of note, in the solid waste fund, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents to Waste Connection, that's for the dog track fund.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve these distributions?
Make motion for approval.
In discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion carries. We will open a public, by the way, have they, John, started with a mobile home setup yet?
No, he had, they've torn down the old existing home, they brought in dirt and leveled up the rest aside, but they have not set.
Solid, right.
Yeah, they're going, he didn't have the footers in yet, but he had brought in the dirt that he needed to level up the lot. He's getting there.
Okay. We will open a public hearing to take comments on the resolution to approve annexation on a partial owned by Red State. Is anyone present to make a comment? The public hearing is closed. There's no old business, so a new business, we have ordinance number one thousand and nine. John, can you recap? Let us discuss what we discussed in the workshop, how we need to proceed with the changes. That'd be, which John? I'd say John Campbell.
Not me, that'd be, you're telling, you're telling Beer Burger or Beer Burger? That'd be Mr. Slaver.
Okay.
Is that my idea? I guess so. Yeah.
John, John, John.
I mean, I can give you my opinion on this.
That is the one that we talked about, the beer, selling beer.
I'll tell you what, I won't talk about the annexation, ever. This is first reading, and there's no motion on the table. I thought from the, what, what commissions, reasons might be, as far as proceeding when we had the workshop, was that somebody might make a motion, somebody might make a second, and then when we had discussion, there might be a new motion to approve the ordinance on first reading without anything for downtown festival area, or for any beer trucks, or any sales that aren't in the, because there were other changes throughout the ordinance that just compliance with the law, it's a new court decisions, and those kinds of things. Also, that could leave the potential sometime in the future for there to be a microbrewery or something, but everything that would be in there, left in there, could be in a building.
Have we ever voted on the original motion?
This is on first reading, the only thing we've had was a discussion at the workshop.
Is a native approval by the city council?
That's what I'm saying, there's nothing.
By what?
The commissioners have not taken this up, there's not been any vote, it's just sitting here. And what I just described is what I gathered might happen tonight, and then if it did, then I would take that back and make the changes that were on account of the amendment. We all have it on second reading, and has ended. Of course, maybe nobody wants to do anything with it, there won't be a motion.
So if the Rockford's order, it has to be, it has to be brought to the table as it is written down?
That's all there is, that's what there is.
It can't go back and wish for, because the general consensus is that an outdoor festival, beer sales.
Well, if nobody does anything, then there won't be anything before the commission, and then if someone or more of you want me to make the changes, bring it back on first reading again, then I can do that, I'll just done it. The only thing we would really be doing tonight is advancing it, from first to second reading.
If we don't act on it now, if it's dead?
If it's dead, as it is, it's not really dead, there's never been anything here. If there's no motion, and there's no action, then it's just not here, and if somebody wants to make something with it, and so if somebody will want to make a motion to pass it, I'll be happy to do that.
They saw much of this ordinance that you're trying to get passed, but we don't understand it, and we're not being made aware of.
Well, the only thing I've heard, that the ordinance has been circulating somewhat, and the only thing that I've heard it pushed back on is sales that aren't in a building, not at the festival, or beer truck, those kinds of things.
Well, we're not all sitting up here laughing, I know a couple of y'all, but playing on gun, me, I don't understand all these rules and regulations, and we don't approve it today, it comes up again tomorrow. I don't understand all that, I won't complain in what we're doing.
Well, the best, the best suggestion I think for my analysis, in my office sometimes, we sit down, I'll do as much, I'll just explain as much as any of you want to.
John, the only, the only thing that I have a question about is, when we talked about it in the workshop, my understanding was it was going to be revised, and the beer sales from a truck or outside the building was going to be removed, and then re-simitted.
Well, that, that was just a difference in, our perspective is about what order things were going to have.
Right.
Why couldn't we revise it and take that out, bring it back before the commission, without out of it, and whatnot?
We can, I'm just saying, that's what Sam and I was saying, we just had a different perspective about what order this was going to have.
Is everybody good with that?
There's no rush on it, Todd.
No, yeah.
I think, I think I would feel more comfortable with that out there, more, the motion.
Well, yeah.
I've read through it several times, and I have no problem with the microbreweries, I think that could be in the future, and I just think that in particular portion of it, it puts a lot of liability on the city, instead of in a building type.
From a part meter procedure standpoint, we should be top of that, because we don't have a motion to say so. But I'll be there, I'll take that stuff out, and we'll get a copy out to everybody without that any.
All we're trying to do is prevent our family festivals down here, to get out of control, certain liquor beer in an open vehicle down there, or open truck, I don't think it's right.
Okay, we'll move on, just bypass that, we'll bring that back before the council.
As far as the beginning, just like I said, just reflect the final act of a motion.
Yeah. Okay, next we have a resolution to annex, resolution to approve annex, annexation of territory, that is what the Red State.
That's right, in your packet, you got a copy of the resolution eleven dash seven dash twenty-two, this was recommended by the planning commission, it's a parcel of land, approximately seven and a half acres, we talked about this in the workshop, it was obtained from ascent, or hill pipe, or land swap, and it just never was annexed into the city, it was just a small chunk, it was county property. We discovered it basically when they, the Red State, did all their carving up and re-subdiving of all that land, so this is just a resolution to annex it into the city, that way it lines up with all their property.
We talked about this in the workshop, too.
We did.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion for approval of annexation of the property, as approved by the planning commission, second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Now we will adopt the plan of service for the property, if we looked that over, I guess in your packet there, we had it last time in the packet, so do I hear a motion to adopt the plan of service for this property?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Now we need to zone this same property, ordinance number ten ten, to resolve recent annex property to M One General Industry, industrial on first reading, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion of approval.
In discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Now we have a rezoning request as discussed in the workshop, is there a motion to approve the resulting?
I make a motion for approval from, from R one to R two, on first reading.
Second. In discussion.
This is one on Oakland Road, it is, this is on Oakland Road, there are actually two parcels, they're two acres, plus or minus each, for a combined four acres. This is when we talked about the workshop, Tanner Ermac, the same guy that's developing the town home off of High Street, similar thing there, he wants to come in with a boat, call the sag, and put, I believe, four units in there, four more town home units, for sale, so more housing, but in order to do that, it has to go from R one to R two to allow for multi-family homes, and then the setbacks would be for planned unit development, because those buildings, basically, you're divided by partition, by party wall, so the setbacks of R two would have to be adjusted with the planned, just like we did on High Street. Yes, it is, it's a, it's a perfect.
Everybody good? Roll call, go.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Moyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sess.
Aye.
Motion carries, ordinance number ten eleven, to rezon partial seven point oh five and seven point oh six, about zero twenty-three, from R one, R two, on first reading. As usual, we have paid in-service to police and fire in November, we have an item to automatically pay this annually in November unless there's a problem. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Finally, I fill the vacancy with Jackie May, I'll take Louis McCalvin's place on the planning commission, this doesn't necessarily have to have a vote, but I would just like to have the council's approval and blessing toward Jackie, and I am going to ask for a nomination or to, a motion to appoint him in Louis McCalvin's place, just to make him feel like that we approve of his service.
Second.
Motion made, second, are there any discussions? Everybody know Jackie?
I think it's an excellent choice.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Yep.
As a matter of fact, we had a class in Madisonville Thursday, and he was right there, you know, it was unusual, he wants to fit right in, so, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Few reminders, Friday at nine o'clock, S H S Veterans Day Program at Sweetwater High School, we always try to make it out that way, it's always a good program, and if they really do a good job, that'll be at nine o'clock in the gym. This Saturday, lineup, Veterans Day Parade at eleven o'clock in Walmart, parade starting at noon, there will be a short program at the gazebo, and won't last long, will be dismissed. Also, coming up in November, do you want a workshop on November the twenty-eighth, Act of Thanksgiving, or you just want to wait till the December board meeting? Are there anything, John, you're aware of that may be coming up for the workshop discussion?
There are some things on the planning, that will be on the planning agenda for November, that would potentially, potentially, we think that side plants, things like that, it's not even kind of resolutions or orders, that you all have your at, side plants.
Okay, is it okay with the commission, if something were to come up on the twenty-eighth, they all would be available?
Yeah.
If not, we'll just bypass it, that's okay with everybody? Okay, depending upon what happens at the planning commission?
Yeah.
You know, do we, have we found out any more on the construction going on down at Walmart?
I've not heard, all I know is that they, what I, what I heard was, whoever purchased it, it was a commercial developer, they purchased the entire boat tract, that's all I've heard, I don't know any names, I don't know any tenants, it's, other than his, commercial developer, it's his own commercials, so I don't know what they're doing.
That's all. Well, we were, I did hear a rumor that Porchback Church gonna build a church down there.
That's wrong. We're gonna bail a lien to our somewhere in the corner somewhere.
That is a rumor, that's going around. Okay.
Mayor, can I have a phone?
Yes.
I just wanted to, for that, police department, thank all the other partners that were part of Maze Avenue and Downtown Production for Halloween, everything looked great, and we cannot do that everybody's having, we just wanted to say thank you, we appreciate the work everybody did, and in particular, I wanted to recognize Officer Tom Beaney, you all, I guess, know the incident, fellow probably who drives through there that high, so there was potential, very great problem, officers that were there at the location where that happened, where it didn't under control, Officer Beaney in particular was able to get the control of the vehicle, stopped, and that fellow's now in custody, and remains in custody as of ten minutes ago before we start the meeting, so that was a very dangerous situation, just to make sure of training, vigilance, police department has to say, what could have been a very bad situation, we want to recognize that, and thank all of the department.
Thank you, Jim, I'm glad you brought that up, I used to crowd, I'm telling you.
Most likely.
Yeah, yeah, everywhere, thank God, he stopped that car before it. We, we need to recognize Tom, also, I understand we've got a lifeguard that saved a life, happened to be my granddaughter, saved a life, that fool, kid from drowning, and I think it'd be a good idea to recognize both of them with a special recognition, I'm just throwing that up, not every day you'd say a lifeguard saved, maybe two, and I don't know, is that putting you out there too far, Eddie?
No, I think, I think it's great, I think both of them, I remember when the lifeguard you're talking about, I'd actually mentioned that then, and I think Tom, and like I said, the policeman and the fireman all working together, you know?
I really do, I think.
We prevented a very, Tom prevented a very bad situation happening up there.
There is no telling how many lives he can save, and we are blessed that he was there at the right time and right place, that he was physically able to do what he did under that circumstances. Thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. Okay, anything else going for the board? John, anything going on with your park?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Still people getting permits and all that?
Yeah, people still building, it has slowed down just a bit from the wave that we had seen in Grisland Farms, I think they, they're getting close to completion in there, there's not a whole lot of data blocks left, still have a few coming in from Willow Creek, so I guess the wave of the rush has died down just a bit, but they're still coming in.
Eddie, anything going on?
If I could just add, you know, Buster's probably gonna be with us tonight, he and I've been working on some, you know, police and streets, we're in the process of getting downtown, you know, it's getting darker quicker then with the time change, so we're, we're looking at some new signage down there, possibly we're working on Main Street group down there to try to get some lighting put on those crosswalks, we've got a couple options we're trying to put together for them, but from my understanding, they'll be able to, they'll be getting restrapping in a couple weeks hopefully, it's just everybody's behind right now still of doing stuff, but I think the strapping, and I talked to two companies today about putting reflective, like base down on the ground where it's at, where it'll be a reflector, and I talked to a company today about trying to get a bed on, put some push buttons in the crosswalk, that throws up a reflective light, like when somebody gets ready to go across and push a button, it'd be a reflect.
But that's a good idea.
Get just something to, try to make it look like.
Country street is darker than I think it needs to be, it needs, yeah, that's a good idea.
It's darker, but there, there's more apartment in there, I'm trying to get some light to shine up in its window.
You think we're on the backside?
We need it in the back, too.
What's that new spotlight up on the police station?
Tim, what's going on with you?
Everything's good.
I know you can say that, everything good, okay. Lover, you got a report for us?
We had one thousand eight hundred and fifteen kids and parents who waited in line in a tree for tree, so that's just once we waited in line, so probably about two thousand on Maze Avenue for helping, trying to help.
Everybody have an estimate, I mean, people actually into the vicinity of where you water?
I know, well, Creek's got a bigger group than I usually have down there, because we, I put two officers down there apparently, the whole time, basically, they've been sitting there.
Main Street will have some numbers eventually, but I don't know if it will cover Willow Creek, Willow Creek or not, but they will have some data available hopefully by the next Main Street meeting.
I would put the crowd as big as Fourth of July, once you count what's on Maze Avenue, what's downtown, it's, it's twice as big as any crowd I've ever seen on Main Street.
I think we're gonna have some numbers, aren't we, from the county?
Should have.
Yeah, from that new, whatever that new technology is that they use, that they're supposed to be able to count, basically, I guess it tracks cell phone usage and that and location, so should be pretty accurate as far as the crowd, once we get those numbers, but I don't think we've gotten yet.
You know what moves me, Eddie, both at Willow Creek and downtown, too, I was amazed at the adults that was dressed up.
I'm not like you.
There was more adults dressed up than they were kids.
And they can understand.
I see you down there, but.
We're saying the same.
We're saying the same, I think.
Opportunity of ranking.
But they, it went well, and I'm so thankful. John, anything going on with you?
No, I mean, if you see our guys out and about with fire hydrants, we started a new program with utility board, where we go around and test fire hydrants, that's another ISO check mark we can mark off, but we started that last week, so we'll be out and about every day doing that, so if anybody sees anything, ask questions, that's what we're doing.
Are we any closer to getting ISO lowered with the new fire truck and everything?
I'm not, I'm not gonna jinx it, I'll just, just.
But it is looking good.
It, I'm not gonna jinx it, I'm just gonna bite my tongue right now, but we'll know, we'll know about March of next year, so.
Since we had the rain, is the van still?
I'll lift it for a few days, but this wind keeps up, just dries it down as fast as.
I got some brush I need to burn.
Get it done next Saturday.
Okay, anything else? All minds are clear, we are adjourned, thank you. All minds are clear, we are adjourned, thank you.